Everybody has the minutes from the 14th. Are there any, is there a motion to approve?
I made a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second?
I'll second that.
Are there any comments or corrections or any changes? All in favor, yes. Unanimous, thank you. We do not have the public's. Patrick?
Director's report.
Moving right along.
Okay, so I said it a little bit late, I apologize for that. But I went through and added a few things to what was kind of a pretty thin director's report
I didn't see.
a week ago. And there were a few things to add in the week in between. The first and biggest news, I think, is that we have rehired for the Youth Services Coordinator position. We are now with, our, the new person is Julia Lloyd, who was one of our subs. She's someone that lives in Hadley. Sue knows her fairly well from Duke, I think, from the, from the book club. And so she had a sense of her as a person. And then she came and was doing something since the beginning of the year. And so a couple of people have been able to work with her. We had a lovely interview, felt, all felt good about her. And so she has joined us, so that's fantastic.
Starting when?
She started on Monday. Yeah, so finally, we are not short-staffed, which was really, for two months, we were short-staffed. And this is quite a, quite a thing.
And how was your vacation?
It was awesome.
Could you come back feeling refreshed? Or did you come back feeling like, oh, my gosh, there's a huge trial I need to deal with?
More like that, yeah. But it was good while it lasted. You know, while I wasn't here. I didn't think of you once.
As long as you shouldn't. Or the snow, right?
I, well, yeah, I just kind of look way back. So anyway, so other interesting things here. We now have consumer reports online available to the public, which is something that people have been asking for for a while. We finally took the plunge on that. And I think that's going to get a lot of use. Yeah.
Is it open access or is it more limited access in the way that eBooks are?
Like, do you have to check it out? Or is it just like a good link?
You, it's, it's, it's going to be a link on the library's website. And you just click on the link and it asks you, if you're at home, it asks you to authenticate with your library card. If you're here, you just go on it. It knows that you're in the library, it just lets you use it.
Okay, good.
Is that something that's connected to Lilly too?
To what?
To the Lilly?
Oh, Libby.
Libby.
Totally, totally unrelated.
We were all wondering who Lilly was.
Yeah, I was in Lilly Park.
I was thinking Eli Lilly.
Yeah, yeah, Libby, yeah.
We have a couple of things coming up. I don't know if you folks remember, last year, we had Maureen Shea, who was a Hadley resident dancer and a member, was, I don't know if she was even more, she was a member of the Cultural Council. And she got a grant to do a series of performances here that took place down in the end of, in this area. She's doing it again, and she's actually doing it at a number of, like, three or four libraries in the area. And she's doing it with, and she's got another dancer that she's working with. So she got a grant again. I said, sure, you can do that here. So that's happening on three sets of Fridays and Saturdays in March, in March, April, and May.
And so they dance outside?
Inside.
Oh, okay.
And that happens like after, like as we close, either at seven on a Friday or three on a Saturday. So that's nice.
Two of my favorite things.
Which two?
Libraries and dancing?
Libraries and dancing, okay, there you go. So what, actually, the one thing that I have highlighted here that I think we need, well, we're going to discuss this roof stuff, which may need some action. But I am, again, looking for volunteers who might be willing to come to the library on two specific Saturdays, Saturday, April 8th, and Saturday, May 13th, at 9:00 a.m. To, hi, John.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Hi.
Come on in.
Hi, come in.
To open the library an hour early on Saturday for the Hadley preschool, the friends at the Hadley preschool, which meet here once a month. We have been having staff come in an hour early. But I think it would be, it may be easier if we have a trustee, a key, anyone that can volunteer to be here, just to let them in. And then staff will be along shortly thereafter.
April.
April 8th and May 13th.
I could do those.
Awesome, that would be great.
And Maureen, if something comes up, I can be a backup because I have a key and I'm a block away.
I'll follow up.
That's fine. And then, uh, May 18th?
13.
May what? Okay.
Are you already putting them in the calendar?
Yeah.
So, all right, so no need to follow up. Fantastic. I will bring to your attention that we discovered a small leak in the, or some, some sort of water issue happening in the local history room. There was a discoloration at the edge of one of the tiles. And I got the ladder out and went up, popped it up and looked at it. And the backside of it is, you know, the majority of the surface of that panel has a stain on it. So it was a substantial amount of water. And there were a couple of other, like, grapefruit-sized stains on an adjacent panel. So I called Gary Berg, he came over and looked at it. He's not sure what the source of it is, so he, and he's not sure if this is an actively, because we can't really confirm how long it's been there. I think we would have noticed it if it had been there for any length of time, so I think it's new. He's going to, he's going to rake something up with hands, with paper in it, to sort of figure out if it's coming from above the level, because there's some piping up there. He's going to make sure that it's, he's going to figure out if it's coming from the piping or from above the piping. And then we'll determine what we need to do from there. But we're, we're trying to figure it out, and it's, but it is a little dispiriting.
Yeah. It sounds like Granby. Remember when we toured Granby?
No, I don't remember that.
Yeah, she said they had quite a few leaks.
Really?
After they opened, yeah. She said the same thing, like, we spent all this time building it and then we had leaks, yeah. I can't remember what the source of the leaks were, but I remember her saying that specifically.
Yeah, and it's, right, without, and without knowing more, it's hard to say what it could be. Is it a fluke thing? Was it something that happened when it was, you know, when you're still under construction? Who knows?
Were there any damage materials? It seems that of all the rooms, it's the one that would have the leak.
No, because it only seemed to have soaked down enough to put a small stain.
Just in the ceiling.
At one spot.
Okay.
It didn't, it didn't look like it had dripped. I didn't see any sign of anything coming, actually coming through. And the panel itself is dry now. So it's hard to tell, you know, how long ago that happened. I have nothing on the HVAC noise, unfortunately. I do, although I did have, have an email to Scott and C.C. Carolyn when was on it, just sort of saying, you know, we've asked for this to be discussed with the, with the vendor who has the contract for the HVAC equipment. And we have not gotten response of any, any kind in a year, close to a year. So I was kind of pushing that, so we'll see if that accepts steam. And that's, that's more or less it.
In that case, we will take a brief timeout in order to introduce John.
John, hi.
Who is considering perhaps running for library for us.
Yes, I'm considering that.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, thanks.
We're all in favor of consideration.
My political record is not very good.
You know what, if you vote, that's all that matters. Yes.
I ran, I ran in a student council election when I was in high school and I lost.
We won't hold that against you.
It's time to remake history. We're here to help.
Oh, good, thank you. So my name is John. You're, you're Maureen?
I am.
So we kind of communicated?
Yes.
And are you related to the, the Dora people?
I'm, that's a cousin. My family has a farm.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm Allison, so Maureen's rolling off, so that would be one of your, you know, a vacancy there. So I'm Allison, and I've been a trustee for, gosh, I don't know, what, like, 11 years? A long time. I've been a trustee for a long time, so.
So you saw this happen?
Yes.
On your watch.
Yeah, I was the chair of the Building Committee at the time, yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
It's great.
We just talked about the leak, so we're, but it's all good, right?
It's, it's a great library. It was, it was a great library over there, but now you have space to, to be it.
Now that's, yeah, that's accessible too.
More to offer? I didn't realize you weren't running for reelection.
Sorry, I thought everyone knew.
I'm Jessica. Jessica Cam, I'm the secretary, or clerk, or minutes taker.
And who's on your shirt?
Ruth Bader, Ruth Bader Ginsburg.
Oh, wow. Well, I can only excuse myself by saying I've only seen part of the face. Hopefully, I would have recognized it, yeah. I remember her.
The crocheted collar.
It was a giveaway.
Her glass?
I'm Susan, I'm new to the board.
Nice to meet you.
I am Lynn. I am chair this year, and I was on the Library Building Committee. So welcome.
As long as we're on this topic, I will say that town clerk notified me that when I posted the meeting the first time, that one person had taken out papers. And I believe that person is in the next room.
Yeah, I know Joanne had by that time taken pictures because she got my signature. But don't, never fear, there are two positions vacant because we had a.
There's no contest yet that we know of.
Yeah, we had a retirement, I don't know if you know Alan Weinberg, but he was, he was also a longtime trustee member, and he had a step down for family reasons, just, like, just recently. So we have.
Good.
Yeah.
Still safe.
See, a lot of people don't want to run if they feel like they're running against anyone. I feel like that's what the number one thing people always ask me, so.
And a couple of dates to be mindful of is you have to take out the papers if you're interested by the 24th of March and return them by the 27th of March.
So where do I get them?
The town clerk.
Today is the 20th, so by?
Friday.
Friday.
Yes.
Okay.
And then you need to get a bunch of signatures? Yeah. I don't, yeah, like, you know, Hadley residents, so like, the dump isn't a place to do it, you know, you obviously can.
Neighbors' church, senior center.
How many do you need?
I don't remember. It's like 30?
I was going to say 35. I mean, usually you want to get a couple extra. Because if the town clerk can't read it, or if it's somebody who's not a registered voter.
Well, I'm in that writer, writing group, and most of those people.
Yeah, perfect.
Well, I mean, he can just walk over to the senior center. They're suckers. They'll sign it, I think.
Oh, that's good.
No, I don't think there's.
Well, thanks for telling me that. I had no idea what was involved.
I called last week. It's pretty painless. And Jessica was like, you know, giving me the 411.
I have to write everything down.
Some of us, you did it in COVID too, right?
I did, yeah, I did too. That was a big pain. I coordinated over email and just drove to people's houses.
That I did.
Yeah.
I remember I was seeing her, can't we just get these by Zoom? We do everything else by Zoom, so all of a sudden, I now have to go and get people's actual signatures?
Yeah.
Because some people were like, no, I don't want to.
Yeah. Yeah. I met a lot of people on their porches.
Yeah.
Moving on to the roof.
That's interesting. So is this a good summary? We have the two, you got the two. You called others, but these were the only two that said they could do the job. So you started with the bigger list.
These were the two that responded affirmatively that they could, that they could do the work and, you know, actually followed through to schedule it. There were a couple of other names, one, I don't remember all the details, but one of them was like not really inappropriate, appropriate to the work. Another one didn't return the call. At this point, I don't remember the whole. And then one of those was not even on the list. I just went, you know, and looked at roofers and looked at their ratings and stuff and called them and said, is this something you could do?
Yeah.
And they said, yes.
So like, one of them basically was in the format of a bunch of questions and answers? Did you give them those questions?
Essentially, yeah. And I gave them to both of them.
But the other one did not answer the questions. They just gave a report.
They were both, they were both given the same prompts to work from in terms of how, I didn't instruct them in how they should write the report. And I didn't know how much detail they would give.
I'm just, I just thought that was interesting because reading the one report that was basically like, yeah, there's some stuff wrong, but not like major barrier, major problem, right? So if that's all we had, and, you know, again, the goal is to make sure that our roof is sound and to make sure that we can put solar on it and we can convince the town, the roof is good enough to put solar on it. Like, you could take that one there, and we would not have that argument. But the other one is not, does not answer the question directly, right? You, I couldn't find evidence of that question directly. And they, they suggest it's a larger systemic problem that needs to be. But they never came out and said, it's not good enough to put solar on. Isn't that right?
So the.
Rivet is the one.
Yeah, well, right, so rivet, I'm trying to see if this is, if you even mentioned the solar here.
So when the roof was built, it wasn't built with the idea for solar?
It was. And it was, the building was initially, the initial design was for, called for a metal roof, which had to be put as an alternate on the bid documents because we were, all the cost estimating came back higher. And at that point, it was looking like we were not going to have enough money. And rather than risk having to go back to a town meeting to ask for more, we looked for ways. And that was one of the suggestions, to replace the metal roof with a shingle roof, which nobody liked, but that.
But it was cheaper.
It was cheaper. And I think the question is, should we have, I mean, I guess it wouldn't have been cheap enough. Maybe we wouldn't have realized the savings had we gotten a better shingle roof. Had we gotten a better shingle roof, it might have been roughly a wash between a metal and architectural shingle roof. So that may be the reason why we went in that, in that direction. But neither the VOPM nor the architect ever said, you know, you should.
Don't do this.
Don't do this.
Yeah.
So that really is my one question for, for this roofer, who I, I need to send that back. But I guess if there are any other questions, I'll send those as well. But my question for him is, is this based on the type of roof that it is? Is this shingle, is it just inappropriate for it to be on that kind of roof? Because what you're, what he's describing with the wear that's happening, which seems to be based on heat more than anything, is this just not a shingle that's rated for this kind of roof, should it not have been deployed in the first place? He hasn't said any, you know, he's not saying that, but I'm just trying to, would any shingle fail under the circumstance? Or is it just this type of shingle that is failing?
Are those questions also that a solar installer would answer?
They could. I think the idea between, or behind getting these is that these folks are in no way.
Financially involved.
Right, they're not.
They have no skin in the game.
They're not angling for the job. I mean, they're just giving you independent analysis. Whereas if we get a solar installer, you know, they may be thinking that they're going to be putting the solar on the roof or maybe angling to bid on the job.
Right, but if the roof wasn't sufficient, then they wouldn't want the hassle of having the town come back again and again and again to them. So I think it would be in their best interest to say.
But I don't think that's their responsibility.
Well, and I think, so one thing that, that Carolyn suggested, that I was confused by, but I understand it a little bit better now. She was saying, get, what did she call it? Pre-bid warranty inspection. Which essentially means the roofer or the solar company looks at the roof and says, this is the condition of the roof as we see it. And then if there's like a problem later on, that is attributable to, it's like they're, they're saying, this is the condition of the roof before we started working on it. And then if something happens after the fact, you can then go back and look at it and say, well, that damage wasn't there before you started chopping around or drilling holes in it.
Right.
But we can't get to that point without going out to bid, which is, that's kind of the catch-22 that we're in. And that's why we just went to roofers and said, you know, rate this roof.
Yes.
But wasn't it the case when we met in town hall with Gary and Tommy, that they both said that the GAF rep, the shingle manufacturer, when they were on the roof with that gentleman, that gentleman said that the shingles there were not rated for a hot roof, i.e., one that is not vented?
Correct, and that's one, what one of the reports also said the same thing.
And so the question, one of the questions in my mind, and this doesn't apply to the roofers, is when we made the change not to put the metal roof on, should there have been changes to the roof? Or should there have been different shingles chosen for the installation?
In other words, it was the responsibility of the architect.
Right. And I think this, I think doing this work helps, you know, Carolyn and/or town council to make a decision about whether this is something that is actionable on their part or, and whether we have to swallow it, or whether they might want to make some overtures that might result in them helping to make it right. But the ambiguity is, is difficult. So when I was over talking to Jennifer about this, Jennifer said, well, you know, really, just like anything with procurement, maybe you should get a third, you know, two, an even number's not a real helpful number. So maybe getting another one and just seeing if it, you know, what, which resulted.
Right.
Comes up with, and maybe ask a few more questions regarding the shingles themselves and see if they have some thoughts on that, like, you know.
Do you think now that it's coming, becoming warmer? That you might get more people that would respond?
Maybe, I mean, part of the reason that we rushed to do this was because at that time, all the snow had melted and we weren't sure whether the winter would cooperate. And it hasn't, so it's a good thing that we did it when we did it. But, yeah, I don't know if there's, I don't know if all the snow's off the roof at this point or not, but it should be soon. So we could at least get one more and then have that to, you know, inform the discussion.
I mean, maybe, that's why I asked all those questions at the beginning, because I, you know, I want us to be realistic that what if we can't find a third person?
Sure, we can find a third.
You think so?
I mean, I didn't spend that much time calling roofers, but, you know, the original list yielded, was one of these. I think it was the rivet company, and then the, and the other one was one that I just googled.
Okay.
But there's plenty of others that I'm sure, you know, I mean, they got paid to do it, it wasn't hard work.
So the recommendation is to, for us to authorize the funds?
One more.
To have another person come?
Yeah.
Is it the consensus of the board that we should pursue a third evaluation? Okay.
Do we need to vote on it? Do we need to authorize, like, up to whatever these other ones were? Like $5,000, is that?
No, no, no.
500?
750, one was 750.
One was 500, one was 750, something, something.
Or does it not matter? Because you have the ability to.
If it's less than a thousand.
Okay, that's, yeah.
That's, yeah, that's how we.
Okay, perfect.
Rolled with the last one.
Okay, well, then let's, let's take a vote to authorize the director to secure another evaluation of the roofing condition.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick, for doing that.
For the minutes, we've just authorized one more evaluation for up to $1,000?
Should be more than enough.
Okay.
Because this is coming over from the leftover building.
Construction funds.
And he already had that, like, authorization to.
Is there anything else that, that anyone can think of that they would like to be part of the, you know, evaluation process? Any other thoughts or questions or?
So I wonder, so I saw that you, you had the questions. The peak people did not mention this hot roof business.
Yeah.
Would it be worth asking them?
So that is now a distinction. See, I didn't, these are terms that I was not even familiar with before.
Exactly.
That's what the, a hot roof is, if you go and look at your roof, you usually have a soffit, and the soffit has vents, and then it goes up, and there's, there's a ridge bent at the top. This does not have that. You've got the roof deck, which is the plywood that makes the roof, and the shingles are attached directly to that. There is nothing to keep the bottom of the shingles away from the heated attic space or to minimize the buildup of heat in that space.
But there is not a five, right?
I don't think so. I think it's the same all over the roof.
Oh, okay.
I don't think so.
Because it's really the lower roof on the sides, that that, that's what's showing to us where, you know, relatively.
So I'm just wondering if, we have a question to ask that? Or to ask, hey, you know?
Well, that's, that's what I, what I think I'm going to do is go back to this, to the one that was sort of more dire in their assessment and sort of ask more questions about that. And just say, so tell me, you know, again, is this what we would define as a hot roof? What, what, you know, defines a hot roof? Tell me more about materials that are appropriate for a hot roof and materials that aren't, and try to, you know, elicit more. And then from that, when I, you know, draft another email to some other prospective roofer, I'll, I'll be a little bit more informed in what I'm asking.
And, but these guys never weighed in as to whether or not it was appropriate to put solar on?
Correct, but it sounded like they were essentially, I mean, I read between the lines here that you need to do something about the roof.
Right, you need to replace it with metal, basements would be said.
Or another shingle roof, but it's properly vented, and then your problems would be resolved, and you can do whatever you want up there.
Yeah.
But right now, clearly, something has to be done. So I didn't even take that into account because it seems obvious that it has to be fixed.
Perhaps it would be worthwhile in talking to them to get, rather than infer, to ask them a more straightforward question in an effort to get a more direct answer.
Does a metal roof, would that be impacted by a harness? I mean, it probably would be better?
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing. I think that that's, you know, that's why it was designed the way it was. The question is, as Lynn said, saying, should they have not, you know, rejiggered the roof to be this kind of roof?
Yeah. The fact that there's no kind of outlet or venting.
Sure. Okay, anything else on?
Thanks, Patrick, for doing all that.
Sure.
It's, yeah. I am sorry, we have to be doing this.
I have kind of some shrinky, I'd like to give you.
Sure.
He did, he did the most poorly during the.
I was already going to ask.
I'm just saying, the same roofer that did mine also did.
Okay, so they could do.
He's doing a commercial.
But I mean, you haven't heard even that about it. It's not, it's not like their roof is family.
No, it was just done the same time.
Okay, then let us move on to the meeting room policy. And I will start off by apologizing for throwing all of the letters up in the air and having them come back down in a very different order than what they had been in. Because it's so different from what? Not in terms of substance, but in terms of presentation. And I wanted to ask if anyone has any changes? They would like to incorporate any more words that I might have misspelled in the.
The only thing that I, but I did not, I was meaning to sit down and read this again. Before meeting, I didn't have time to do that. But my, my question is, did we, I know we talked about it, did we incorporate some language in there about the personal, like, you know, like, family events for the parties? Did that make it in?
I don't think so. I don't remember saying that.
That was something that we had, that was in South Hadley's policy. And I asked Joe at South Hadley about that. And I said, well, why did you do that when you had? at South Avenue about that, and I said, well, why did you do that when you're having, you know, what was the thought behind that? Because it's, it's at the top, and it's involved, you know, it's very prominent.
Under eligibility and exclusions, library meeting rooms are not available for private, closed, commercial sales, and family functions.
Oh, okay.
Perfect, okay, so it is in there, great.
Yes.
Because we are having, we are having more and more requests for those kinds of events, quite a lot, actually.
Birthday party at the library?
Children's birthday parties, and things like that.
Yeah, yeah. Who wouldn't want it here? Right. Everybody loves the library.
I guess, but it, yeah, it is, I mean, it's fine as far as it goes, but, but, you know, along with that comes a certain, it's kind of at cross purposes, they're not, you know, and I asked, when I asked Joe about that, and, you know, was kind of trying to get the sense of, you know, what, the difference between, like, how they make a distinction between certain events and other events, you know? And he was essentially saying, like, you know, I always go to the, like, the Girl Scouts or something like that, which the Girl Scouts have met at the library at various times, but it's not like, you know, you can't just walk in and join the Girl Scouts at their Girl Scout meeting, right? You have to be a member, and so how does that, how does that work out? And his justification for that was, I mean, first of all, it is a kind of a director's discretion kind of issue, but it's also that the Girl Scouts, to his mind, constitute a public, you know, they are a...
A public organization.
A public organization that has a public purpose.
And you could join, you might not be able to come and join that particular meeting, but you could join.
All our classes, yeah.
It is a community event, it is not a personal event. I think there's, anyone who would try to argue the distinction, I think, would be missing the vote. The other thing that had been a significant discussion item at the last meeting was how to sort of use language to ensure that Patrick or any director has the ability to decline an event for perfectly good reasons, but ones that we don't want to go and enumerate, because when you start doing that, then you are sure to leave out whatever it is the next person's going to ask for.
For people's...
So that's covered by, this authorization includes the option to decline a reservation for reasons related to concerns including, but not limited to parking, staffing, concurrent programs, et cetera.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Does anyone else have any comments?
I've only one question. I don't remember talking about the traffic detail.
Yeah.
I remember talking about parking, and that was one of the reasons we could say, hey, you know, the concurrent programming, right, that we worry about parking. So in there, there's some line about groups might be asked by the director to have them hire a traffic detail.
It's under number three.
I don't really know how that even works, and I'm worried about the ambiguity, like, well, how come such and such had a traffic detail, and I, I just worry about putting Patrick in a different...
Well, so, I mean, a good example of this, and this is, you know, being organized by, I don't even know whose office this is being organized about, out of, but there was an email that went through today, from who I don't remember, about the Memorial Library, for instance, and, and, you know, the Council on Aging and the library info said, well, I mean, we're closed, it's happening on Sunday. But they still were asking, is it okay for us to use this, you know, parking lot as staging area, because there probably will be, you know, considerations, whatever it is, trash, or trash can will be filled up, or what have you. And that is an instance where they're, they're going to have to have, I'm sure they're going to have to have a traffic detail, and it's their responsibility to, you know, to figure that out, and they know, because they've done it like 100 times. But that's an example of a big event that's not the library itself, that we wouldn't want to have to, like, necessarily call the police, we want to say, like, yeah, sure, you can do that here, but you're going to need to call. And it was actually an email that coincidentally was sent out today from the HABDQ's department saying, this is the process for getting, for ordering or requesting a traffic detail. I don't know why it came out today.
So there's clear rules and regs about who would have to do it when? So you could actually point to that document and say, you have to do it...
This would be, yeah, this would be, this would be such a rare instance, but it would be one of those things where somebody comes up with a perfectly good thing, like a Memorial Library, and says, we want to do this, and we want to use the parking lot, and maybe we agree that, sure, you can use the part of the building for that.
Well, this was the staging area for the...
Right, it's a staging area, but, but in this case, it's like, it's sort of like, I don't care, we're not here on Sunday, like, do what you want, it's town property. But it could be a situation where it's not that, you know, where we are more involved, and somehow, and you want to be able to say, okay, but we're not, you know, you got to do this, and if there's a cost, you have to pay it. That's all that is there for, really.
If the town has something that says, this is how to do a traffic detail and when you'd need it, that's perfect. If there's something that you can, or your staff can default to and say, this is why...
Check with the police and see if that requires a traffic detail.
Yeah, that's perfect.
I still think it's such a rare instance that it would happen, but it could.
Well, I thought it was rare, too, I'm like, why do they even put that in there? It seems like a lot of work, the one time it'll happen.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Okay.
But it will be someone else's responsibility, not to determine.
Yeah.
Or even if Patrick just directs someone to, at least to say...
Well, I think it just, if it looks like it's very obviously going to be an issue, if there's going to be, like, hundreds of people, and, you know, I mean, I can't even imagine, aside from a parade, like, where this would come up, but in the odd circumstance that it does, it's there.
But someone might, someone might say, can we use the community room and spill out? Like, we're going to have a thing outside, and we want to have 100 people be able to mill around and get food, like, it could be expanding to hundreds of people, so I can see that.
Like, what if it was something that was somehow between the library, or the stuff over on the side of the street, and Hopkins, and people were going to be crossing back and forth, and it was, you know, a safety issue?
Well, what happened last summer when there was a concert out here on the front lawn, and people were parking, and then, you know...
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't have a traffic detail, we didn't have anything, you know, it wasn't that many people, it was probably 50, 60 people on the lawn.
But I'm saying that circumstance could lead to...
Certainly, but that was, that was a library program, if we thought it was going to be figured, that would have been on us to get a traffic detail.
So then you would have had to do the same thing, you would have had to go contact...
Yeah, but it didn't seem like that big of a, yeah, or summary.
I didn't mean that specific event, but just like that type.
It could be, yeah, it could trigger that, yeah.
But the language here is basically just, like, just in case there's some big thing, it's, it's in the document that this may be an added cost.
Right.
I think we talked about whether we wanted to have an added cost for groups of a certain size for added custodial, or did you decide against that?
What happened about is that, that we, in the meantime, we had a conversation with the town administrator about custodial.
Increasing the levels, yeah.
Because they're only coming three days a week, and she agreed that it wasn't adequate, and they, they were planning to put in the budget the money to hire someone, not a contractor, but a staff person who would work for DPW, that would clean this building, that building. I'm not exactly sure which buildings or why they made this distinction, but I know that it was us and Council on Aging, and I don't know who else, that they were thinking that this person would cover. So if there's someone coming here five days a week, I don't really feel like we necessarily need to pass those, pass extra costs on to the public, unless it's some exceptional situation that I don't...
Which is in there, that exceptional situation is in there about the, if you don't leave the room as you, yeah, so that's in there.
One other question, the language about parking just seemed a little vague to me, so it just says, should be aware that onsite parking is shared. I assume that means shared between the library and the senior center, but that's, that's unclear.
And, and...
Or shared among town, shared among town...
Buildings?
Buildings? Just, the word shared just seemed vague to me, and I think...
Well, and I think it's also, it also kind of begs the question, like, what are we trying to, we're trying to say that parking is limited, because a lot of people use it for a lot of different purposes, and we cannot reserve parking for you wherever you are.
Yeah, but to say it's shared among, among multiple town buildings indicates that, like, to me, when I see this, that it's shared, it's like, I might, you know, I might think, like, oh, it's shared between my event and the library, or something, like, I might, I might not know exactly what that's...
I would just say that's public and limited.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good way to put it instead, that the library has limited public parking.
Yeah.
Shared with other town buildings.
Yeah, yeah, the library shares limited public parking with other town buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Anything else? May I please have a motion to adopt the amended meeting room policy?
I'm moved to accept the meeting room policy as adjusted tonight.
Any further conversation, discussion? All in favor? Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Susan and Patrick, and to get him up.
No, I, I really do think it was fortunate that we had the example that prompted the review, or that there were no problems, but...
Go question.
Okay. Yeah, it disappeared, dissipated, anyway. Maureen, do you have anything to update in terms of the friends?
They're in the process of doing the membership, and they're also adding books and, you know, refining the Friends...
Books, yeah.
Books, yeah. And I think they're looking into buying, updating the merchandise, they're getting rid of, or they're selling a closeout sale.
They're having a sale.
A closeout sale, yes.
What are they getting rid of? Like, they're...
All the Goodwin stuff that's branded with Goodwin.
Oh, the Goodwin, the Goodwin, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's hardly collectible.
Better get yours tonight, is what he's saying.
Looking to the camera.
Limited edition.
Take your money. There was something else I was going to say, Patty, actually, Patty's been, Patty Judy's at, does everybody know Patty? She has been really working this book sale pretty hard, and doing a great job keeping it neat and organized and everything else. She took some stuff that we had pulled out of the collection, it wasn't even in the collection, it was stuff that...
Had been deleted?
Had, probably at some point, but some of it was stuff that had been just in boxes, you know, that we dragged over from the old building, some of the stuff had been sold in the auction, some of the stuff that was sold in that, that book sale that we had, where it was kind of out here in the main space. But there was yet more, there's always more, and she took some stuff over to Gray Matter, and I don't remember how much she told her that she got, but she took three books over there that were just not relevant to the collection, but were valuable, and she made, what, a couple hundred bucks?
Wow.
Just walked in, said, what do you think of these? Cut her a check for whatever it was, 200 bucks, 300 bucks.
Wow, that's awesome.
Yeah, so I think that's great.
She has an amazing ability to...
Well, last, last year, she took a book to the flea market, and she got one.
Right, I think she's, I think she's honing her approach, figuring out how to, you know...
I love it.
Spend less time and make more money.
Yeah, well, I'm going to check out the room before we leave tonight.
Yeah.
I haven't looked in it in quite some time, yeah.
It's really nice.
Yeah, no, it's organized.
And you two could get your canvas bags.
I have many canvas bags, I love the canvas bags, actually.
They're durable.
Exactly, I might get more before they're sold out.
One last quick thing, has everybody who needed to done the ethics la di da?
Oh, yeah.
I did mine less than two years ago, when I was elected, so I am not in violation.
I double-checked for my, I double-checked.
I think I did mine for you, though. But I'll double-check.
You might just call Jessica and ask if she could see you in the database, I'm not exactly sure how, because instead of...
Well, I'll see her Wednesday, so...
Yeah, it used to be that we had to, you know, print out the little certificate and, like, bring them over, and then...
Yeah, it's electronic now.
Now they don't do that, yeah.
Yeah, it was a paper thing, and it was like a nightmare, because at some point it got shipped into HR, and then the clerk was like, but I don't have them, can you do it? He was making us do them again, just because she didn't have the certificate, so this is apparently a better system, but I don't know what she could see, like, if you work for another institution, I don't know if she could see it.
I thought it was really interesting, I mean, I used to do it at UMass, too, but I thought it was interesting that at some point you get to the, well, which of these categories of state employee do you fall into? Thank you very much, because what the procurement officer does and what I do are not the same.
Yeah.
And so I appreciated that they had done that. Okay.
Could I ask a question? I was going into my records to collect minutes that I had not turned in to the town, and I do not have the October minutes, I was not at that meeting. Alison, I think you took the minute.
I'm sure I have one.
I have the November ones, but I think y'all were kind enough to just not keep me in the loop on emails in October, so...
I'm sending myself a note right now.
Okay.
So as far as the, the minutes go, are you, are you sending them to someone?
I have them all in a folder now, and I need to get them to, I need to get them to you.
It's got to be, it's got to be me that ends up, because I put them on to the...
Oh, I give them all to you?
You can give them to me, and there's also a binder that...
Yes.
I think it has a hard copy of those things.
Binder here or a binder there?
Here.
Okay.
Yeah, but if you can send me the PDFs, I mean, I could take care of that, just print them all off and then put them in the binder.
They're all Word documents, but if they need to be PDFs, I can...
You can send them to me in any format, and I will get them into what they need to be, and then I'll just, because I want to put them on the town's website with all the other minutes, and we have not done a good job for the last year or so, we've not...
That's because...
No, 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 it's not, it's not, we, no, it...
Well, it is. No, it predates your assumption of...
Sure, but, but, yeah, like, this is, this is one of those things that I just, I just, like, I keep saying, like, whenever a meeting comes up, I'm like, oh, I've got all those minutes, I need to get those actually posted, and I'm going to actually send you an email right now with a whole bunch of attachments.
That's, that's great.
Going back to May, because that's, that was the last minutes that, those, the first ones I took are the last ones that Megan took, so...
I will grab the October ones, I'm sure I have them.
Great.
If I did them that month, I have them, I just don't have them right now.
So I'll, I'll email this to you, I'll just CC you, and then you can just reply that thread, and it'll all be in one place.
Perfect.
Okay.
Yep.
The minutes, just to be clear, the minutes dysfunction goes, I mean, the last time that I had, like, a regular process for this was when Alan was doing, so it's, it's actually been a while.
Yeah, and when I was doing it, I was excellent at the electronic, and I was shamefully bad about the printing amount and putting in that binder, I was like, this is 1990, this is driving me crazy.
But the paper's going to last longer than the electronic.
So I, I, like, saved them up, and I did it, like, once a year, so...
That's the way to go.
So there was a lot of dysfunction that totally created you, just.
You are not responsible.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm responsible for the more recent ones, but I'm not responsible for starting it. I will take that, but I am trying to catch up on these kinds of things these days, so it's one of them. Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anything else we should cover tonight?
Is there any update on the wall?
Oh, the donor wall.
I do not have an update on that, and I need to call him again and see where he's at. I talked to him, I'm trying to remember when, something probably around the holidays, and said, you know, what's up? He's still, still out there.
So, because I now have a list of all the folks, thank you to you, and then you sent that additional list of the folks who donated through the UMass.
Yeah.
So I now have the list of folks who would qualify for the, you know, 2022 wall, but I don't want to just, like, start sending things out before, like, so, if we could just get a time, like, a rough, like, July, or whatever, plus it would be great to have some sort of dedication ceremony, et cetera, which does take time.
Yep.
So...